Mike's on. It should be Mike.
All right, it is about 6:03 and we are having a budget workshop for the fiscal year 2019 budget year. We will refrain from saying the pledge legally just right now because we'll do it at seven o'clock when our regular business meeting starts. So we will begin. We have Sean Pine and Erica McNair here to talk about their portions of the budget for the elementary school and special education. So Meredith, if you'd like to introduce them or however you want to do it.
I think you just did. But they're here. Yeah, we did receive a few questions from the board ahead of time and Erica and Sean are going to try and kind of weave those in as we go along. But certainly feel free to ask questions. I don't know who wants to start.
So what I thought I would do is I believe you all have a hand up that I look similar to this. I thought maybe we just go right through these talking points here. These are the major things that are occurring in the budget. If you take a look at that first page actually.
Have five. It's a green tab.
Sorry.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, shade of green. After enrollment.
Gotcha. Couldn't see it from here. Couldn't see what he was talking about. I don't know.
Okay, great. So part of the things that we were taking a look at for next year is obviously the projected enrollment. And on the front page you can see the projected enrollment for the 19, 20 school year. You will also see on there that I had proposed that this year we do have a teacher who will be retiring at the fourth grade. Currently, the fourth grade has four teachers serving 85 kids. That class is moving up to the fifth grade next year. My proposal is is to take a fifth grade teacher and perhaps move her down to the fourth grade. Yet to be determined. And take that opening from the retirement and hire a first grade teacher. The reason why I'm looking at hiring a first grade teacher is that currently I have five kindergarten classrooms. Each of those kindergarten classrooms have two adults in it. Right now, those classrooms are running to about 17 to 18 kids. If we keep status quo and go with the three current first grade teachers and the three 1-2 teachers. We're looking at class sizes that would be around 19 to 20 for first grade. Bringing the fifth grade teacher down, we would get that down to around 16. The rationale is thinking that we're going from classes of, let's say, 18 with two adults. Now we're going into a classroom if we have that fifth teacher. Smaller number, but just with one teacher there. So that was kind of the rationale.
And we still have the floating paras.
Yes, they would be floating paras. And there is no assigned teaching assistant paras into the first grade levels. That's just a kindergarten thing that we have at this point in time. But there are paras that float depending on where the need is.
They're identified for special education.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. So that was just kind of the rationale for that. This other sheet that you just received, sorry I didn't get this to you earlier. Kind of just breaks down what classes would look like number wise. I just numbered. I didn't put any teacher names on these. So you'll just see teachers 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, or teachers 1, 2, 4. It breaks down kindergarten, what the average class size would look like, and what are all the class sizes. So for instance, if you're taking a look at the third grade. You would see that we have for third grade next year, we're looking around 79 kids for the entire third grade. So three of those classes would have 20 kids. One class would have 19. So that's how you take a look at those totals down at the bottom, they kind of shift.
So this is for next year?
This is for next year.
This is not the current?
Correct. For next year. And keep in mind that this is a projection. Because we lose kids over the summer, we gain kids over the summer. We're gaining kids right now, matter of fact. So these numbers obviously are just a projection, but based on what I'm seeing for enrollments for next year. This is your ballpark of what you're looking at for classes. Any questions regarding those numbers at all? One of the things too is that this is kind of following what I had received when I first came aboard into Newmarket. Were some district guidelines from the superintendent at that time. And those guidelines state that, you know, for grades K through 2, we're looking at roughly 18. And through 3 to 5 would be around 22. Those numbers kind of fall within the range of surrounding towns and the state average. So some are maybe a tad bit higher, some are a tad bit lower.
Again, it could change. I mean, we could be looking at 23 in each class.
There's always that possibility. Yeah. You know, it depends on the flow of people in and out of Newmarket. Like I said, today we picked up two new students. So that number goes around, which is a good thing. It keeps us in business. Plus it speaks, I think it speaks volumes about the town and the district.
What's the guidelines referring to?
If you look at the front page, there's a, right here, I wrote the blurb about guidelines. It's just that the district uses class size guidelines of 18 students in preschool through grade 2. And then at 4, 22 students in grades 3 through 5.
And Al, this is the question that we had last year about whether or not we want to have a policy that states these things more fluidly and consistently or how we want to handle it. But I think, you know, obviously based upon the state averages and what Sean is saying. These guidelines make sense to me for the projections for that year. Just for me, at least for me at this point, but they make sense to me.
So I'll jump ahead. So we do have similar guidelines for every level?
Nope, these were the budgetary guidelines that were in old budget binders before Sean and I both arrived here. That we pointed out to you last year. That had been the operating sort of MO here.
Yeah, so that's what I've been kind of working off of.
And then we have the guidelines the board adopted this year of 18 to 20. So trying to work with that.
And, you know, and perhaps some other time, do we revisit those and take a look at what other towns truly have for solid numbers? I mean, we could do that, but I don't think it's a pressing need at this time. If you just flip over that page right here, these are kind of where the major shifts have taken place in the budget. You will see on the top line there the scholar supplies. Next year, I'm proposing a $53,000 in that budget line. That represents a $12,000 increase. That increase is due to buying, resupplying the consumables for our Super Kids reading program, which we adopted this year. It would be a reoccurring expense in the future as well. However, I would also say that the teachers are new to the program. So they are still getting used to what actually is really essential to have that program go. So that number could go down. I would not see it ever going up unless the cost of the product itself goes up. Then you have the textbooks and non-consumables. That's actually a decrease of $30,000. It sounds like a, it's a sizable decrease. And the reason for that sizable decrease is that for this year's budget, we had actually budgeted money to purchase Super Kids, the program itself. So now we no longer have that cost of purchasing that. So that number has gone down dramatically.
Now, how often would you have to rebuy? Like, will that last five years so that we're basically looking at that initial purchase price kind of being amortized over five years? And every five years, we're going to have it? I ask that because I come from a background. We had a textbook review cycle. It was five to seven years.
Yes, it's been about 20 since reading streak was put into place at the elementary school.
Literally, it's replacing a program, a Scott Forsman program that had been in place for well before I was here. It was probably 10 or 12 years before I was there that it was adopted. The cycle for replacing Super Kids, again, I think it's on, we're going to stick with the program. The consumables will be yearly recycling the program itself. A lot of the stuff is very high quality materials. I don't see it wearing out anytime soon. But, you know, with the cycle of taking a look at textbooks.
But to your point, Ingrid, I think we've tried to say last year was literacy. This, for the coming year, we're really focusing on science. And so you will see costs. Math is probably the subsequent year and then social studies. So you could anticipate every four to five years probably seeing a replacement cycle for literacy.
That's kind of what I was going to be my further question because we did have that kind of, okay, once every seven years.
It's new, but yes, that's what we are.
We'd cycle back to English as reviewed this year, next year. So every seven years in our system, we knew we were going to have a review. We might renew, but we were going to review.
Right, right. Replacement furniture, it's an increase of $2,000. The bulk of that increase is coming because we would like to purchase some additional cafeteria tables. Once the gym is done, which by the way, currently looks fantastic walking in there. The cafeteria will be bigger. We'll have the capacity to do two grades at the same time. The idea is that we can spread them out a little more. I also would entertain the thought of buying some round tables instead of the long ones. It tends to, when you have a circle of people, you're not yelling to the person down at the other end of the table. So it would hopefully be an opportunity to do that as well. So that's the bulk of it. The rest of that kind of 2,000 comes from, or the other 3,000 is just replacing with some area rugs that are in classrooms, that sort of thing. Replacement equipment, it's a $1,900 increase. The bulk of that is is that we're looking to replace some instruments for our band program, trumpet and a saxophone. Those are expensive items, but well worth it. The band program is growing by leaps and bounds. I believe Ms. Ray says there's about 70 kids right now participating in the band program. So kudos to her for getting that going and fostering that interest. And also we're looking at possibly, requesting if we could purchase 366 note keyboards for general music classes. And that would be that $600 that you see there. Enrichment activity, the cost increase that you'll see there is primarily that we have been starting the artisan residency program. There are grants you can apply for that. But every year you apply for the artisan residence grant, the grant gets smaller and smaller. So we kind of took a shot and said around $2,000 would make sure we could get that program back into the school. That is Ms. LaBranch's spearheading for us. Advisor salaries, it's an increase of around $1,100. That is for two Lego League coaches. We are, have Ms. Bascom right now is doing the Lego League, which is a robotics, beginning of robotics programs. It's a big STEM push through the state. Kids go to the regional competitions for this. So it's for coaching for that. And we also would like to have another opportunity for an after-school art program through Ms. LaBranch as well.
And I think there is an additional 500 in that line, which represents a special Olympics program being funded across the district. So that's shared in the elementary line, just not included in Sean's narrative.
So we're going to divide that with the middle school, high school?
That's correct.
How have we paid for that up to this point?
We didn't. It was at the cost of families and fundraising. We felt that it belonged with the district, like our other athletics programs.
School nursing supplies, you're looking at a $400 increase there. It's just the cost of resupplying the nurse's office is just going up in terms of the expenses for the materials that they're getting. It's an inflationary key that hasn't been really balanced out in the last couple cycles prior to. If you look at the flip page for books and periodicals. Currently, we're looking to increase that by $1,500. That is to be really focused on purchasing nonfiction books for our library. The narrative that you can see there is right now, we're about 2,002. There's a lot of nonfiction. Some of it still holds water and it is accurate. But, you know, 16 years, things tend to change a lot. We want to make sure that we give our kids the most up-to-date and current information that possible. It's a big push in the district, a big push across the state is the getting kids to do a lot of nonfiction reading. More technical reading than has been in the past. And the final thing you'll see is just we have a new assistant principal. So there's two at the school, including myself as the principal. That is a $600 increase to cover any dues for professional organizations that Ms. Cochran may want to join. To support herself in doing her job. So those are kind of the biggest things. Everything else in my budget is pretty much, you know, even balanced from last year.
Any questions for Sean?
Just to double check, those dates are basically looking at the collection for nonfiction.
Right. Yep. Ms. Stern's done a nice job of calling out some books. We've had some ones that were very old.
I worked with the bureaucracy that called everything that was before 1999, including 1984.
Well, it's funny, they were doing, they found a great book and as a child I loved it because it was Mr. Pine's mixed up science books. And that was found in the closet in one of the things. So I have it in my office. And intend to read it to some classes soon.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Erica.
Is this the same as the one we had?
So the beginning is the same, just so you don't have to look for that in your documents. But I also included some additional documents in the back from some of the questions. So I wanted to do some of the same because there was also some questions on some of the pieces that were in the original material. So I wanted to run through some of those as well. Basic demographics on the first page, including our staffing. We have 16 special education teachers across the district. Three of those are funded by the IDEA grant. Our caseloads are listed below. One of the questions was kind of how do our caseload stack up? Are those appropriate caseloads? We have done regionally in the Seacoast. Special Ed directors have pulled our data to take a look at that. And our elementary numbers are right in line with what we're seeing across the region. Our middle and high school numbers are a little bit lower than what we see in the region. Typically, what you'll see is a slight increase over the years. With the lowest caseload average being at the elementary, it will usually kind of step up a little in middle and then a little bit more in high school. But as we kind of shift that, averages can be deceiving. Because one case manager may be servicing four students and they could be four of our highest need students. And that can offset the number by another higher number. So averages give us some good information, but again, it doesn't give us the full picture of what that looks like in day-to-day practice. Other questions on the averages?
Do you have the average with the state averages?
In the region, they were looking at basically 12 for elementary, 14 in the middle, and 16 to 18 at high school. That was regionally. Now, again, you have some outliers. There are some districts who have 25 to 30 at the high school level and some that will have lower. So again, that average can be difficult to really line up with such varied numbers, but that's where the averages have been.
And I think your point of one student is not the same as the other student in terms of needs says a lot too.
Yeah, exactly. So for the following year, we're looking to keep those teaching numbers exactly the same, keep those on par. Our para-professionals, we are also looking to keep our current number. We're still looking for a couple more paras. But we had also, we had produced that by four in the previous budget cycle. So we're feeling like 45 is a good place to stay for now. One of the things that you'll see, and also you'll see this in the additional documentation. There's a one sheet that really just kind of gives the overview of each function that is held within student services. So one of the things you'll notice is if you look at the special education, the 1,200 on that sheet. Really, we have a very minimal increase there. It's just about $3,000 across all of the 1,200s. However, there are some shifts. So that's where that can get the information on the original documentation about the assistant principal also is helps with that.
It's some shifts and it also doesn't include teacher increases. Because that is, the bulk of that line, well, maybe not the bulk. A large percentage of that line is staffing.
Yes. So the, what we had done was move the, we had the special education coordinator who was within the 1,200s across each of the three levels. Elementary, the middle, and the junior senior high. And what we did was we moved that to special ed administration for greater clarity because really that's an administrative role. So that, you'll see an increase in the admin role. You don't see so much of the correlating decrease because the proposed nurse goes in there and really kind of takes that, those funds. It's kind of like a flop between those two. In the ESOL, you'll see a slight decrease. That's really a staffing change and with the correlating changes in their scale. Social work was a newer, was a new thing that we added this year. We had a staff member who went out on a long-term leave for a year. A large part of her role has been counseling students. So some of that has been taken up by her role. But she also has a couple other buckets and hats that she's wearing and servicing more than just the students, but also working with the parents and also the community at large. She, if we kind of look at it, I think of it as like three separate areas. She's got the mental health piece with the behavioral and mental health support, providing group and individual support. And also consultation to teachers and teams for students who require that. But she's also a liaison to outside services. So we have a lot of families who access either community mental health or they need help accessing community mental health or other providers in the community. She not only helps be a liaison between the school and the providers to ensure we're all moving in the same direction. But she also helps to get those services in place for families that are struggling to find those resources in the community. And the other piece that we wanted to take on is an education role, not only with our teachers, but with our parents and also the community at large. She has been working recently at developing a parent questionnaire that will be going out. What would we like to see for parent forums? What do you want to know more about? What do you need to know to help your child in school? So there's kind of more than just the counseling piece. It really takes on that liaison piece and the greater community.
And if I could just chime in, Samantha Blackadar, who is the social worker that is with us at this time. Done a fantastic job really getting acquainted with the families and identifying the families that have needs that we've always knew. But a lot of times, unfortunately, we don't have those outside resources that we can say, oh, here's a group that can help you with the issues that you're dealing with. Plus I think, you know, unfortunately, there's a lot of issues that are going around in the greater community and in the Seacoast area. And I don't see those going down anytime soon, unfortunately. And to have a resource like this that can really advocate for those families, advocate for the children that are coming in. It's going to help us in the long run because, you know, it's sad that a lot of, a lot of our kids come from some pretty tough situations. And she's there to mitigate those and make those situations a little easier. And I can't speak well enough for her. And she's been a fantastic addition to the, to the district.
It's great to have those thoughts, Sean, to hear that, you know, what's, what's really happening and how important it is.
I would just add, it's under, it's a standalone line. Erica put it in her narrative under sort of student support services, but it is servicing both general education and special education students and families.
I had been wondering how much we could see just two years into the, two months into the school year.
She's really hit the ground running. Really has.
Is this an additional person?
So currently she's taking a one-year position with us. We had somebody who was out on a one-year leave. But in conversations throughout the district, we've really seen, even in the two months. The, it's really a proactive solution to some of the things that we've seen. Instead of reacting or, and potentially reacting later, trying to be proactive and hit some of those things up front and really provide those supports. And so we as a team have really kind of talked and said, this is really something we would like to see. It's an additional position for the following year, but it's not currently.
Because it's flanting, it's filling in a position, somebody who's taken a year off.
We had, we had a number of discussions during the year about how important a position like this would be in reducing the number of incidents, whatever they might be. So I'm a little concerned that we don't, we don't lose sight of the fact that I, I'm kind of expected to see an add here. So I don't know how to describe it better than that, just simply to say that we're funding it this year, and I hope it's intent to...
That's what it's called.
It is, it is.
Oh, it is.
It's post for next year.
Gotcha, gotcha.
We were saying add, I'm like, is it a verb or is it not?
Yeah, yeah.
No, it is add.
Gotcha.
I'm like, what a verb is it?
But this is the first year, so we've only had two months of background.
The first year we didn't have to fund because it's replaced.
Gotcha.
This is going for next year. Yep.
Yeah.
Well, have you noticed in two months, I know, but this would help with behaviors, too. Just if we're, if we're ahead of...
Right.
Some of the stuff, maybe we can help with some behaviors.
And she's just been good working with us in terms of like, if we have crisis situations that occur at school, whatever they may be, she's really helped us kind of organize and get that information along with working with our guidance people as well. So it's, she's been an incredible asset since she's been here. Like I said, I can't speak more highly about her and the work that she's doing.
And as you said, having the ability to have that person who's really working with families also, we're going to see a much bigger return. If we're doing one thing and the families are doing something different, that's not that coordinated effect that we're really looking for, and this position really helps us to do that.
I think also when we look at the mission, emotional support is a part of it. Emotional family support is a part of what we're supposed to be doing and helping the students. And if we have someone there who has the special set of eyes and the trained set of eyes and the resources outside, benefits.
Right.
Absolutely.
Yes.
If we go back to the quick piece here, psychological services, you'll see a decrease. Again, that's due to staffing changes. It's not a reduction, it's just change in staff. Speech.
Staff and benefit elections.
And benefit, yeah. The speech and OT are really, there's, there's not a lot of change there, looking to keep things the same. The special ed administration, that's the increase that I had mentioned before with moving that position into that line for the greater clarity. And special education transportation has a slight increase as well, but not, not anything too substantial.
So when we look at the special ed administration, that's half of that new assistant principal?
So it's kind of like, we had a special ed coordinator before spread. So that person all went to one and half the job is special ed. So that one person picked up half of regular ed. So then the other position that we added last year takes up the other half of the already full special ed piece, but then the addition of the other reg ed half. So really, in special ed administration, it's, that number is the same because there was one, and I have half elementary, half junior, senior high, but it's now in the admin line. So it looks like a large increase in special ed admin, but it's the same staffing numbers.
And there's a corresponding increase in the elementary admin and the junior, senior high admin that represents the rest of that position. Again, we reduced the assistant superintendent position. We added essentially an assistant principal overseeing special ed. So we had one special ed administrator and one assistant superintendent. Now we have two assistant principals who are partially funded through special ed. Same number of positions, same number of people, just allocated to the buildings rather than split across the building and central office.
One of the questions was on the nursing piece and just what that would look like contracted service versus having that as a staff member. Really...
So it's not an option for us to have it as a contracted service per the collective bargaining agreement? So we have to look at it as a position in our budget, essentially.
They're part of the, what's the first word?
CBA, collective bargaining agreement.
They're in the...
Bargaining unit?
Bargaining unit.
It's a word, and I can't remember right now. They're in the, they're listed as one of the people who are very specific within that. Can't remember.
Part of the Federal Labor Relations Authority.
But they're in there. So that person is there. However, what we're budgeting is very similar to what it would cost contracted either way. So it's not like there's a difference there. It's probably a thousand dollars difference.
And Ms. Nurse would be used as feeding, toileting?
Bus, yes.
She'd be the bus monitor as well?
So we would have to kind of look at how we were looking at scheduling for all of the nursing because the current nurses now serve all students. They're not just reg ed or just special ed. But this position really would be to increase for some of those other needs that are above and beyond what we feel now we can really support. So this would really help that piece.
And that may be required by education plans for students. And so the three nurses would, among them, share the bus monitor responsibilities as well as the general building supervision and meeting the medical needs of the individual students as required.
So we haven't contracted this position in the past because it's in the bargaining?
It's been really about the student and the student needs and what's in IEPs currently and really looking forward at what those needs are going to be in the following year. Again, where we provide nursing services to all students, this is just special ed saying, but we have this need that we want to make sure is filled. And so all three nurses would really be like a nursing department. One person is being funded through special ed and the other two through regular ed.
Isn't it more ideal to have that person, I mean, I guess it's moved the contracting versus person issue because of the agreement, but isn't it better to have that person on staff in terms of knowledge? The person's there each year. If you had a contracting?
Yes, but we hadn't had the same need in the past. We had budgeted two years ago for a part-time, a .3, I think, FTE nurse based on anticipated needs. That wasn't realized. That need was different in the end than what we had projected eighteen months or whatever earlier. And so now that need has arisen. We're projecting forward for next year based on the students that we know are here or are coming, that we need another full-time nurse in order to meet those medical needs.
So that raises the question, is this something that we evaluated each year?
Every year, we develop new IEPs for students, so there's constantly changes. I do think that this is going to be not a one-time thing, though. I think that we're going to see a need for additional nursing services over the years.
And she'll be able to go, this, the new person will be able to go back and forth between the two buildings?
That's, that's how we're envisioning it, is really looking at all of them as a unit and working with all students. And yes, you may be housed out of this building, but we have needs in both buildings, and we want to make sure we're meeting all of the needs of all the students. Absolutely.
And again, I'm probably pointing out the obvious, but isn't, isn't it beneficial to have that continuity? So a person, presuming they stay in that position, we're not hiring another person every year. Have that knowledge, having worked with folks, could take a look?
Yes, there's always pluses and benefits. So there's always, you know, you're working within what the bargaining agreement says, right? So we have restrictions with that. When you're contracting out, you can say, I want this and get that. But then again, you can have the turnover. So there's pluses and minuses to both options, really. I can say I want an eight-hour day for my nurse versus what we have in the CBA. So there's, you know, there's...
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah.
And with the new bigger nursing office, more space for people to be taken care of.
Hopefully, they won't all be sick.
Those daily needs, just think about the daily needs.
Yep. Also, in your packet towards the back, I included, oh, sorry. I included two of the slides that I had from my presentation the previous month because I thought they went well with information on the ABA program. The first one is the school age placement sheet, which shows that we're really educating students more in a restrictive fashion than we really should be or where the state is looking for the averages to be. The next is, what do I, I talked about for least restrictive environment and looking at that sixty-two percent of our students who are placed out of district had a primary coding of autism. So it was pretty clear that we needed to do something different for our students with autism. When I started, we were trying to do individualized program for a lot of students, but when you're doing that, you're recreating the wheel with each one of those students, and it's not very efficient use of time. So looking to bring this person in, it makes us more efficient in how we're providing those services, but it also allows us to better serve the students and not be sending students out of district when we don't have those things in place. So in addition to that, I included the last sheet, which is really kind of a basic that's in both on what an ABA program is, who, where, when. And we have partnered with the Constellations Behavioral, who is a regional provider for BCBA services and ABA services in the Seacoast and beyond. We have now a, in addition to the services we had in place for students, we have a full-time ABA instructor who is working with students, helping to train paraprofessionals so that they can use those methods throughout the students' day. So instead of isolation and providing the service and then going away, when we're, when we provide that service and instruction to our paras, they can carry that out throughout the day, and that's a bigger return for what we're seeing for our students. In addition, that program also gets an additional day of BCBA oversight. So it's increased the capacity within our building because that also provided us an additional day of service by a board-certified behavior analyst. So some of the benefits you'll see here are also what I mentioned, that students who were at risk for potentially being placed out of district because their needs were not being met, we now have a service that can meet their needs. We're still working to develop the program and get all of these pieces in place, but we now have those services to hopefully be more efficient, more effective, and better serve the needs of our students.
And this program right now, where are you currently working out of? What room are they working out of? Do you know the number?
An elementary classroom.
Yeah, I can't remember the number, but an elementary classroom.
It's a classroom right next to the special, current specialty.
Which is nice because it also provides access to the other special educators. The other question was on ESOL and what those caseloads look like. Similar to the special ed averages, averages can be deceiving. Every year, our students who are identified for ESOL receive a state test called the ACCESS that tests their knowledge and skills, and then it depends, it determines their levels. And based on where their levels are, are then recommended guidelines for service provision. So we could have one student who has just moved from another country and is not speaking English, and they require two hours of service a day. Or on the other end of that, we have students who have hit the threshold for not requiring direct instruction, but they're called monitor status, and those students have to be tested, and they have to hit that threshold for four years in a row to then be exited out. So again, the averages can be deceiving, right? We can have four kids here who are monitor status, a couple of kids over here who need two hours a day, and then everything in between. What they do say for guidelines, the Department of Ed says when you're providing instruction, so direct instruction, which backs that number of twenty-three down a bit because we do have students in a monitor status, we're within the guidelines that the DOE recommends. They recommend that we keep a caseload size for an ESOL teacher at what a classroom teacher would be instructing. So we hit that, but we also have a tutor as well. That's also to support because we have K through twelve and we're going between buildings. The tutor cannot provide the assessment. That has to be done by the teacher. So the teacher does all these state assessments and also oversees and supervises the tutor. Regionally, we see anything from ten to forty on a caseload. So even though the state may recommend keeping it to what a class size is, this is a very wide range on what caseloads are in the area, depending on the district that you're in. Again, you look at the average, you're looking at about one for every sixteen identified students. But you've got some with ten and you've got some with forty. So it's really, but we're, we're on the lower end of the average and the number of units that are, that are recommended, we're able to do that with our staff.
Are those numbers weighted based on the complexity of the needs of the child?
No, the averages are just the averages, so that's why it can sway so greatly.
And, and I mean, the teacher load, not the averages across...
The teacher load, so they really just say same as what any other teacher would have instructed.
And you're calling that the average?
That's, that's what the state is.
The average load.
Okay.
And the average load.
That's the term you use?
Yeah. I think I ran through all the specific questions. There might have been one, Ingrid, that you had asked about just there was a professional development line that looked like it didn't have anything.
Right.
That's what the correlated change to move that special ed administrator into the admin line.
Yeah, I was like, I think they're moving around, but I can't tell where they moved to.
So those other pieces and benefits all also come up to that line.
Any other questions for Erica? I hear none. Thank you, Erica, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Meredith, do we have time to go to the SAU? Is that too, do you want to add that?
We can do SAU or we can share revenue. I can do, the SAU won't take long, so it's up to you.
What would you guys like?
Let's get it done.
Let's do the SAU.
Okay. So if you go to your first, I don't know, golden rod, yellow tab? Yep, account by function. So not the summary page, but the next sheet in. We're going to scroll up to the twenty-two hundreds.
Can we, um, release these? Do they need to sit here? If they want to, they can.
Yeah, if you guys want, that's fine.
Yeah.
You are free to go.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
It's a long day, thank you.
Twenty-two, Meredith.
Twenty-two tens. Yeah, I think page numbers get cut off, get cut off of these when you fit so much to a page.
I might not have remembered to put them on there. I'll do that for the next round.
The first line there is assistant superintendent.
Just by number, account number.
So that's the large change in that section of the budget is the assistant superintendent position, which as we just discussed, was reallocated to a, one of, essentially, that's funding the regular ed assistant principal line or portions of that line across the two buildings, and that includes salary benefits, kind of working through there. If you move down, sort of the next increase you see is at twenty-two-ten-fifty-six-ten, which is an increase in our software. Zero fifty-six-ten curriculum supplies. You see a $650 increase. Then twenty-two-ten-fifty-six-forty-three, the line below that. Actually, sorry, that's the software line, and that includes all of our testing software. So Ames Web, NWEA, our Performance Plus software, My Learning Plan, the Alex program that we use for mathematics, that's all incorporated in there. Course reimbursement, a couple lines down. That increase is due to trends that we've seen with staff taking courses for the collective bargaining agreement. So you want to make sure that's adequately funded. Same with the two and three versions of that, twenty-two-ten-one-two-and-three, fifty-two-ninety-two.
Twenty-two-ten, which is ninety-three?
Fifty-two-ninety-two, so there's a...
I've got that one.
Yep, there's a one fifty-two-ninety-two, then two lines down is a two fifty-two-ninety-two, that's junior high, and two lines down is the three fifty-two-ninety-two, which is the high school.
Every other one.
Yep. Then, so that's it for the curriculum pieces of the budget. Then we can move down to the twenty-three tens. Start with the moderator salary. In the fifty-three-thirty line there, contracted services, that's really there for support for strategic planning next year to fulfill that contract. Increase. The auditing fee increase is based on our projected costs for the audit and actuarial fees. And you see a $300 increase to memberships and dues, and that was based on historical costs. A large decrease in what's called the severance payment line. That's the funding that the district provides for teachers retiring from the district. It's based on a formula in the collective bargaining agreement, and so that is it for the twenty-three tens. Move down to the twenty-three-twenty's. You see some changes in the support, salary, and benefits lines. That's due to change in personnel for next year.
What change is that? Is that including the two, the two administrative? And what change is that? Is that including the two, the two administrators that we've been speaking of?
No, this would be the business office. Changes.
Finance assistant. Oh, we talk about a finance assistant. Did we vote on that or we just?
So this is the same people that we have this year.
Yeah.
But the, the same positions that we have this year, but there's been a change in personnel.
And finally had one retire?
She'll be completing her work at the end of this, through this year, but yes.
Transitioning out. For the last three years.
Well, before we get here, so I can't say to that.
Yeah, not since I've been here, yeah.
Anyway, so those are those.
So how many are in that office right now? As of, as of today, how many people are in that office? I have a part-time support, a, um, and then two full-time. Just three? Yeah. Two and, two and not even a half. Okay. I'd have to do that now.
And this reflects two.
Mm-hmm.
Per forward.
Okay.
Those are those associated changes. If you scroll down, contracted services custodian. That was previously under S A U custodian, but we currently work with the town for that service. So that's the projection for next year. And the salary adjustments line was formerly called negotiations, but essentially that's where you reserve money for your administrative and S A U employee, um, contract increases.
And I wanted to mention on that, support salary is also the superintendent's assistant. I forgot because I was looking at the number. The one, the one forty-one includes the finance office and the, um, administrative assistant to superintendent. And you were at contracted services?
Yep. Oh, no, I was at salary adjustments at the top of the next page, which are the negotiated increases. And then, uh, new equipment there is really, um, just a replacement laptop for the cycle for, um, staff.
Any questions about the S A U?
Yeah, can you go back to the, uh, salary adjustments again?
Support staff.
Yeah, you said it was negotiated increases.
No, the line was previously titled negotiations. So we've called it salary adjustments because it seems more appropriate. Um, but those are, that's where you budget for your raises for administrators and your S A U employees. So that includes your technology director, your business office staff.
Jimmy's.
So you're estimating a three percent increase.
That's what we projected. Yep.
Budgeted.
Budgeted, yeah.
It's about twenty people.
That includes.
That's consistent with the town's increase and it's based on the COLA.
It includes the principals, the, um, lead custodians, uh, the finance office, the superintendent's office.
Technology.
Yep, technology. Special ed office, um, administrators.
The assistant principals.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, principals, assistant principals.
Any other questions?
Can we do the revenue? Oh, I, I. Yeah, just pass that around.
Well, I'm going to send you two. One is just an update on our trust fund balances so that you have it.
Now, the revenue sheet is just a preliminary estimate based on this draft. Um, we still have our health insurance adjustments to come and, um, that's primarily, I think, the major.
We don't have our state numbers really yet either.
Right.
And we don't have.
It's a guesstimate.
Yes, the, the, um, estimated, uh, revenues from the state as well. So it's just a preliminary look at, uh, these, this budget as presented. Um, with the, uh, fund balance that remains on the books from the prior year of, uh, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to offset taxes. So right now, if you look at the chart that I just sent around, the tax rate was just set for the town and schools. That's in the third column. The fourth column, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, sorry, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty estimate has the twenty-one million dollars as presented in your books with an offset of fund balance of three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And I can say that conservatively because we do have that on the books. That was what was held back on the prior year, two and a half percent. So we have that. Uh, as far as kindergarten aid, you see an increase there. We, we're doing that based on anticipated enrollment of eighty-nine students at the outbreak. Um, it may actually come in a little less because it's on average. It depends what the average daily attendance is.
And it could commit a little more if the state decides to allocate some of the additional proceeds from Keno to communities.
And the other numbers, as I went down, I held them there. Um, if you look at function, other local grants and reimbursement, that's the money that comes from the town to offset the shared service. So as, um, as the budget grows, the percent that the town has to pay, the school grows, and as my salary changes, there's, there's an increase there. So otherwise, um, the revenues right now, I'm predicting flat, including as you go down, we're offset by adequacy aid, dollars from the state, and the, um, school, state, school-wide property tax offset. So based on preliminary estimates, we don't have, if you look back up at the very top, we don't have the teachers collective bargaining warrants in here. So just based on this, it would be projected at this point, a sixty-five cent increase over the tax rate. There's also a, uh, revaluation that's going to happen in the town next year. So assessed values, I, hard to predict what they might do. Um, you know, directionally, we know whether they're going to go up or down, but I just left them flat as well. So, um, as you can see at the bottom, that's, that's how that's calculated. So you take your total budget minus all your revenue sources, and that is the total assessment, and that is offset by the assessed value. And that's how it's calculated. So that's preliminary estimate. You see that will change as we go along and make adjustments to the budget.
When was the eighteen-nineteen, uh, approval?
Just, um.
Friday, I think.
And D R A.
Yeah.
End of last week.
Newsletter on Friday.
Friday.
Yep.
I think I got it in my email, my home email.
And the estimated for next year includes everything except for salary increases and the bargaining.
Because that will be a separate one article.
Salary increase, it benefits changes, whatever impact those.
Yeah, whatever it is, whatever it's priced up to be, whatever the cost of the contract is.
Any other questions about the revenue for NASA?
Does the eighteen-nineteen D R A approval, that includes what percent of the.
A hundred percent of what is owed for this year.
Yeah, I know, but it's.
One of twenty-nine, really.
Two point one million of the thirty-five million.
But I mean, it's the full load. Yeah, that's, that was my, that's my.
Yes.
Oh, I wouldn't.
Yes, that's what we stepped into for eighteen-nineteen, which is why people are getting the increase in their tax.
Exactly, yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, the, last year we only paid the first year of interest. Now we have interest and principal.
Right.
I think that's what you're asking.
And it was about half of it.
You can see the difference. It was eight, seventy-eight going to two million one. You see on the.
Yep, yep, yep.
Fourth row.
Just to sort of, um, close this out and sort of review things, our next session will be next Thursday, the eighth at seven. We'll talk about junior, senior high at that point, facilities, technology, and transportation. Am I missing anything? And then subsequent to that, we'll see what's needed beyond that. But so there are other things on your calendars that keep them handy, if you would, but things might be modified or added.
Can I raise a suggestion on that? What if we began at six and try to get it done sooner? Would anybody object to that?
Can the people be here at six?
I, I don't know.
Let's, let's check and see if they can. If they can, if everyone's agreeable, we can.
Does it make sense?
Yeah. Meredith, will you, will you find out if we can move people to six? And we'll just get done as much as we can.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so that is the end of our workshop and we will start our meeting in about five minutes.